Are we ready to start?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning and good morning to everyone. I now call to order today's meeting of the Board of Supervisors for the University of Louisiana System. Carol, will you please call the role?
Mr. Barry Busada.
Here.
Dr. Jimmy Clark.
Here.
Dr. John Condos. Mr. Steve Davison.
Here.
Ms. Lola Dunahoe.
Present.
Ms. Mimi Methvin.
Here.
Mr. Al Perkins. Mr. Dana Peterson. Ms. Elizabeth Pierre.
Present.
Mr. Virgil Robinson. Mr. Mark Romero.
Here.
Mr. Ms. Christine Russell. Mr. Joe Salter.
Here.
Mr. Brad Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Julie Stokes.
Forgot I was muted here.
Ms. L'Oreal Williams.
Here.
There's a quorum.
Thank you, Carol. And again, welcome to every one of you. I would like to advise you that the contents of today's meeting, including the chat, is being recorded and subject to public records requests. So please keep that in mind as we conduct business. To members of the public who are viewing this via YouTube, be reminded that anyone who wishes to make a public comment on a particular agenda item can email publiccomment@ulsystem.edu. And along with your comment, please include your full name, your affiliation, as well as the agenda item on which you are commenting. Thank you. Mr. Salter, would you please lead us in an invocation as we begin our meeting?
If you would join me as we pray. A dearly Father, we thank you for the opportunity we have to serve. Lord, we live in challenging times in all facets of our lives, and certainly that's true in higher education. We'd ask, Lord, that you would guide and direct us today in decisions that we make. And again, those decisions that we make would be in the best interest of the students that we serve. Lord, I thank you for each member of this board. I thank you for our students. I thank you, Lord, for those individuals who have leadership positions within the system. And again, we ask for your guidance and direction today. Again, we thank you for your many blessings, and we ask for forgiveness of sin for Christ's sake. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Mr. Salter. At this time, can I have a motion and a second to accept the certification to operate virtually?
Motion to approve Romero.
Second?
Second, Davison.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Romero and a second by Mr. Davison. Is there any discussion? Any opposition? That motion stands accepted. May I please have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the December 9th, 2021 board meeting?
Second, Methvin.
Okay, moved by Ms. Dunahoe and second by Ms. Methvin. Any discussion? Hearing none. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, that motion carries. At our last meeting, the board voted to approve board officers for this upcoming year. Mr. Brandon DeQueer will administer the oath of office to the new Vice President, Vice Chair, Dr. Jimmy Jimmy Clark, the new parliamentarian, Mr. Brad Stevens, and to Mia's chair. Brandon?
Certainly. Good morning, everyone. Proceed with the chair. If you would raise your right hand and state after me and state your full name.
I, Elizabeth Pierre.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the bylaws governing.
And the bylaws governing.
University of Louisiana System.
University of Louisiana System.
And that I will faithfully and impartially. And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As chairman.
As chairman.
Of the Board of Supervisors.
Of the Board of Supervisors.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then we will have the Vice Chairman. And I instate your first name.
I, Jimmy Clark.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the bylaws governing.
And the bylaws governing.
University of Louisiana System.
The University of Louisiana System.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As Vice Chairman.
As Vice Chairman.
Of the Board of Supervisors.
Of the Board of Supervisors.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And then now we will have a parliamentarian.
You guys are gonna have to trust me. I'm here. I'm having technical difficulties and I can't get my my pretty face on the screen for you all. But I am raising my right hand and taking notes.
I don't know about this, you know, Brad. You know, this is this is a little shaky. How do we know it's really you? And how do you know about that hand?
Well, I don't know. You trust me, I guess.
Okay, alright.
I instate your first and last name.
I, Brad Stevens.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of this state.
And the laws of this state.
The bylaws governing the University of Louisiana System.
The bylaws governing the University of Louisiana System.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me as parliamentarian.
Incumbent upon me as parliamentarian.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Brandon. At this time, Mr. Clark or Mr. Stevens, would you like to make any comments? So, Mr. Clark?
Certainly. Chair Pierre, I just wanted, you know, thank the board for their confidence in in me, and certainly I'm excited to be serving with you and with Brad. I have had the good opportunity of getting to know both of you quite well, and and I'm sure that with your leadership, the the system is going to continue to move forward. Very grateful to the system staff, obviously, that we are able to support and the initiatives that have been been put forth over the last couple of years. I certainly expect to to be advanced, particularly those with student success and equity at the forefront.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just echo what what Jimmy said. I'm happy to be part of this this group. The work we do is good work. It's important work. Happy to be part of it. Happy to work with you all going forward. And Liz, I really appreciate your confidence in me and appointing me to be parliamentarian and look forward to serving with you and others. Thanks.
You're welcome. And and I echo Ms. Dr. Clark and Mr. Stevens' comments. I thank the board for putting placing confidence in me and leading the board. And I look forward to the best of my ability, as I stated, to to lead this board and on to great and wonderful things. I thank the staff, Dr. Henderson and the staff as well, for all of your support and look forward to working with you and the rest of our board. So at this time, we'll move to item G on our agenda. We have one campus request from Nichols State University. As this is a facility item, Mr. Bruce Janey will provide an overview of the item. Bruce?
Thank you so much, Chair Pierre, and and congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Item G from Nichols, as you said, approval to negotiate for and purchase commercial building located 203 West Second Street in Thibodeaux is formerly occupied by Capital One Bank. Nichols was awarded a Community Development Block Grant through the Division Administration Office of Community Develop on July 14, 2021. This grant awards provide funding to the university's up to 3.5 million for the construction and operating expenses of the Bayou Region incubator. The construction budget may be used to build a new building or purchase an existing building and renovate it to meet the operating need of the incubator. The university is currently working with the architect assigned to the project to design a new building and has modified construction expectations due to increased cost. These modifications include a decrease in the operating space for the building from the original 8,000 square foot design to a much lower space of approximately 5 to 6,000 square feet. And in the meantime, the university has become aware that the former Capital One Bank building may be purchased and renovated for a total cost within the out within the capital outlay budget provisions of the grant. The university intends to engage with a professional real estate advisor and negotiate a purchase price with the owner seller of the building. The purchase price shall not exceed the appraised value of the building that will be determined by an appraisal as part of this process. The university will work with all required parties to complete this purchase if an agreeable purchase price can be reached. The proceeds to purchase the building shall be secured through the CDBG grant awarded to the university for the incubator. Timing of this approval today is very critical due to the limited availability of funding under the CDBG grant that is set to expire on September 2023. And I've asked, should the board have any questions? I have Dr. Kling and Terry Bro, who who is the CFO, to answer any questions, if the board has any at this time.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, well, thank you, Bruce. This agenda item has been reviewed by the system and legal staff and is recommended for approval. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any comments from the public? If no one requires further clarification on this item, may I have a motion and a second for approval of item G?
Salter, motion.
Second, Dunahoe.
It's been moved by Mr. Salter and second by Ms. Dunahoe that we approve this item. Any further discussion or any discussion? Okay, is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing none, that motion stands approved.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Dana Dana Peterson. I just want to let you know I'm 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 here at the meeting. I apologize for being late.
No problem. We're glad but happy to have you, Mr. Peterson. Now, President Henderson, will will you give us your report?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members. Happy New Year. Delighted to see you.
Happy New Year.
Be in person today. We'll talk a little bit more about that momentarily. Members, you were emailing personnel actions yesterday for your review. Including those actions is 4% merit increase for for system staff. It's the the first merit increase since January of 2018. And so that is there. Also, some reconfiguration of our system staff due to the departure of Marcus Jones to Northwestern State. We have moved some duties around to some staff that have shown remarkable ability to absorb, to to offer their talents in some new areas. And very excited about that, including that, of course, it's Kami Geismann, who will become a Chief of Staff in addition to continuing her work. Claire Norris, who will continue to do all of the work she's been doing, and she has proven to be a a very adept fundraiser over the last 60 days, and there was no no part of her job description. She'll be our Vice President in advance. Of course, that will demand some additional help and and very pleased that Sandra Green has agreed to to help and direct some of the special programs initiatives of the system through that area, which also then creates another gap. And Caitlin Wookerson, who joined us five years ago as a last semester student at LSU, when Kami decided to go on maternity leave for legitimate reasons. Caitlin came in, did a remarkable job. Upon her graduation, we deployed her full time. In addition to being Director of Communications, she'll also be Executive Assistant to the President and excited about that. And Keisha Neal. Keisha is has always been listed as the accountant for the system, but her role is much more broad than that. She's Business Manager since the departure of Charles. Last year, she has taken over accounting for the foundation, ULS Foundation, which has become decidedly more cumbersome work because we're actually making raising money for the foundation to support our initiatives. And and so that I I am a student of management. My area of research is in top management teams. I am very pleased to tell the board that in 30 years of of this type of work, this type of work, I've never had an executive leadership team that I have more confidence in. And the results should bear that out. I'm I'm more energized than I've been in some time to work with this group. And so, Madam Chair, that we would need a motion and a second to approve those personnel actions.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Jimmy Clark?
Moved by Mr. Clark.
Second, Busada.
Second by Mr. Busada. Is there any discussion or any questions? Okay, hearing none. Is there any opposition to that motion? Hearing none, the motion stands carried. The motion is approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members. I also want to point out that we had two members of our staff complete graduate degrees in December. Joy Samuel completed her degree from Northwestern State University of Louisiana, her master's degree. Caitlin Wookerson completed her master's degree from University of Louisiana at Monroe. I'm gonna have to rely on Dr. Bear, someone else, to show me how to do the the talent symbol with the hand. Congratulations to them. I I think it's so important when our staff lives what we preach. Lifelong learning is important, and that's two great examples of that. We have two more that are nearing the end of their doctoral degrees and both at Northwestern State. And it's Erica Calley and Sandra Green. We look forward to celebrating them. Should I say it? In May. Last days of the dissertation. Was very, very pleased with that. I give you some updates on some things, members. First, with the Reginald F. Lewis Scholar of the Community Support. Today, we're honored to have two guests from organizations who are supporting the Reginald F. Lewis Scholars Program. First class, the first, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Louisiana. We appreciate Blue Cross Blue Shield's $5,000 donation, as well as their commitment to support our scholars through mentorship and other opportunities. Chris Hilliard from Blue Cross Blue Shield, Diversity Equity Inclusion Partner, is with us today to talk about their donation.
Chris, hey, good morning, everybody. Thanks for having us. We really appreciate being a part of this program, being a part of the system. My name again is Chris Hilliard. I'm the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Partner here at Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And what that means in short is I am responsible for a lot of our strategic initiatives as it relates to D E N I. So, which I absolutely love. I met Mrs. Morris on behalf of Community Relations in the Foundation through Kelly Duhaun, where she spoke to me about the program, the scholars program. And when she did, honestly, I'm a I'm a graduate of UL Lafayette, also known as the real UL. So my apologies to the War Hogs in here. But nonetheless, when she told me about the program, she really broke it down to me and told me all of the benefits, and I I didn't know whether to be happy or jealous, you know, because it was something that it was something that I wasn't allowed to take part in. So when we heard about it, Kelly, the foundation, Michael Tipton, everybody was on board. We're donating that $5,000. We understand that education is the foundation, you know, upon the what people build their lives upon. So from education comes knowledge, and from knowledge comes opportunity. So we wanted to play a major part in these kids' development, in these young young men's development, excuse me. And we want to make sure that we do our part. So aside from the money, aside from the $5,000 donation, we'll also be donating some human capital to help develop these young men and hopefully provide them with some internships in the future. So thank you all again for having us. Thank you, Kelly, for for being on, and thank you, Mrs. Norris, for introducing us to the opportunity.
Chris, thank you very much. And for the sake of the board, would you mind telling people where you went to where you went to school?
Yeah, yeah. So I went to University of Louisiana Lafayette, graduating in 2014, where I studied Mass Comm in Public Relations. And then I got my Master's in Business from Southern University, where I graduated in 2019.
Well, thank you. And I know as a Regent Cajun alum, you're you're very proud of the 16th ranked football team in the nation.
Oh, without a doubt. I was a part of the program back when I was when I was there. I used to work for the football team. So without a doubt, I'm a huge fan.
Thank you for that. And Carrie, thank you very much. And to everyone at Blue Cross Blue Shield for being such great partners. We appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Additionally, Verizon provided $25,000 for the scholars and I want to introduce a dear friend to the system and and with with the deepest of gratitude, please welcome Representative Verizon, Tonja LeMay. Tonja, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you. I appreciate the invitation to be here today and to express how proud I am of the opportunity to partner with the University of Louisiana System to help cultivate diversity and enhance the collegiate experience for the participants in the Reginald F. Lewis Scholars Program. This program aligns with Citizen Verizon, which is our company's responsible business plan and our commitment to economic, environmental, and social advancement. And today, I am excited to share that in addition to the grant, Verizon is also investing human capital in the form of 70 V teamers, which are our employees, who have volunteered to serve as mentors for the scholars. These employees work in various parts of the company and are located across the country. So I am very excited to stand with my colleagues in sharing their experiences with these young men and their efforts to guide and support them on their journey. So on behalf of Verizon and our 130,000 employees, I would like to thank you for the partnership on this very important project and the opportunity for our employees to participate in the development of these incredible young men.
Tonja, thank you very much. I don't believe that Dr. Norris informed me about the last part of that. And I try to to maintain my composure, but that one got me. So thank you very much for that. It is it's partnerships like these that make this Reginald F. Lewis Scholars Program such an exceptional educational, social, community development program, and we are we are grateful for your participation. Members, you may have seen in your news clips this week, the Reginald F. Lewis Scholars Program is partnered with Raisin Canes on an MLK Junior Exhibit Tour. Monday is, of course, Martin Luther King Junior Day across the country. The tour features the hearse that carried Dr. King more than 50 years ago, but is surrounded by other artifacts, and it's an exhibit that will lead to enriching conversations. And the fact that this effort is being led by the scholars themselves, what an experiential learning experience this experiential learning
Opportunity.
Opportunity, thank you. This will be for for them. We look forward to seeing all of them in Ruston this weekend. The tour will start in Ruston. It'll go to Natchitoches, to Lake Charles, and Lafayette as its first stops. It's an incredible opportunity for the scholars to grow and and looking forward to that and engaging in our communities in some very rich conversations that are every bit as timely today as they have ever had been. Robert Hill is our scholar from UNO. He produced a piece of art that will travel throughout the state on exhibit. And I have seen the the pencil drawing of it. It is an exquisite piece of art, and again, just showcases the diverse talents that exist within that program. Several several of our scholars will speak at this weekend's opening reception. And one of Grambling State's scholars, Isaiah Farrar, will play the piano for the event. He was contacted by Dr. Norris and and said, are you a musician? And he says, yes, he plays the trombone. And Dr. Norris says, well, great, because we want you to play the piano for this event. And that's the ability of Claire to influence people. He's actually playing an instrument that he doesn't normally play. I'm sure it's going to be exquisite. I want to thank Todd Graves and Raisin Canes for supporting our scholars, trusting with this project. We look forward to many more future partnerships with them. A little bit of news. Last Saturday, the system was honored by 100 Black Men of Baton Rouge at their annual gala. They recognize the system for our engagement in their programming for high school students. I want to thank Supervisor Al Perkins for connecting us with 100 Black Men of Baton Rouge some almost five years ago. While we were there, the 100 Black Men did their first Vanguard Award. They honored General Honorate and then an alum from Southeastern Louisiana University that you may have heard about, or you may see her on ABC in the mornings on Good Morning America, Robin Roberts. And while Ms. Roberts could not be there, I was at the last minute, was able to accept the award for her. And if you want a lesson in humility, accept an award on behalf of someone of the stature of Robin Roberts. She has given back so much to this state. Of course, she has given back so much to Southeastern. She is a model of what student athletes can be. And she's an example of what we can be as citizens and what a tremendous honor it was, and our deepest gratitude to 100 Black Men of Baton Rouge for recognizing her. So COVID update. Every time that I we begin this this conversation, we always hope that we're nearing the end of these conversations. It continues to find a way to persevere. And this, right now, the state is seeing, and the nation is seeing, the goal is seeing a surge into the Omicron variant of COVID-19. It was first identified in South Africa, is extraordinarily transmissible variant of this virus. We are seeing increasing evidence that it is significantly less virulent, which is great news. I've noticed I did not use the word mild. It's less virulent. It can have dramatic impacts, especially on those that are unvaccinated, those that that have comorbidities. But for the broader population, it it does give us some insights that perhaps a new normal is starting to emerge. This variant is so transmissible, just the day before yesterday, we heard Dr. Fauci give us the very ominous line that just about everybody is going to be touched by this variant of COVID-19. I want to applaud our institutions for their efforts to provide vaccinations for both faculty, staff, and students, and for continuing to operate under the system guidance, which is driven by the science. We produced our guidance, if you remember, March of 2020. We did a deep dive into the science, worked with public health officials, partners across higher education to develop our systemic guidelines that summer. We continued to operate those under those guidelines, continued to adapt them to changing realities. Those guiding principles have have served us quite well. Our institutions, though, have worked tirelessly to produce those safe environments. It has been exhausting activity for staff, for faculty, certainly for our presidents. The state as a whole, with Omicron, we're going to see some big case numbers emerge. I do believe there are some some indications that Louisiana may have reached its peak in terms of infections. We know that that there's often, though, news of hospitalizations and even death that follow those numbers after, up to two weeks after the peak. And we'll pay close attention to that. One of their leading indicators is a what's called an R-value, that is a predictive value of infections that's produced by Stanford, by Yale, and by Harvard. And it's a it's a the R-factor is a 1. So if you if it's at a 1, then someone who's infected with the COVID-19 virus is expected to infect one other person. 10 days ago, that number was at 2.8. An infected person would be expected to infect 2.8 additional people. That number, as of yesterday, is down to 1.14, which is a great indication that when it drops below 1, you'll actually see a decrease in the amount of of virus. Those models give us a great deal of hope, as do the 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 models. the models and the, and the evidence about, uh, virulence. Some are projecting, and as an optimist, I, I choose to believe them, that the data seems to be trending that we have peaked and that we will be returning to normalcy in the coming weeks. Uh, I know that you'll join me in celebrating that day, that, that it's no longer mentioned as the central point of these meetings. But until that day, we'll continue to focus on creating the safest possible environment for students, faculty, and staff. And I greatly appreciate your engagement in this and certainly the leadership of our presidents and, and the, uh, those that they represent on their campuses. Uh, our U L System Conference is scheduled to be back in person on March tenth and eleventh in Nakadish. Marcus Jones wastes no time in, in leveraging his system relationships, it seems. We already have more than three hundred registered. I know it's going to be an incredible time for our faculty and staff. We hope to see you there. And we have a date, uh, for, uh, U L S Day at the Capitol. We are going to attempt the U L S Day at the Capitol. I can't, it is going to be one that, that, that takes into account the challenges of the dynamic COVID situation. And so we're not quite sure what the event will look like this year, but it's going to be substantive. It will be well received. And we'll put the best foot of the system forward. Uh, that day is again April fifth. And we hope to have an, a substantial in-person presence at the Capitol. We would love for you to be a part of that. And Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Henderson. Um, for information, our next board meeting will be held on the campus of Louisiana Tech University in Ruston on Thursday, February seventeen. Uh, the staff will be sending you details soon. We are excited to be able to visit one of our campuses again. So at this time, is there any further business to come before the board? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So, Jimmy.
Okay, I think moved by Mr. Stevens and second by Mr. Busada. Is there any objection? Hearing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Alright, have a great day.